Oh, really?
It's six P M. We'll start the meeting, City of Anamosa City Council. City Hall Council Chambers, one point oh roll call.
Kay Smith?
Here.
Mockart?
Here.
Rod Smith?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Wymer?
Here.
Crowe?
Here.
Two point oh, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh, motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, December ninth, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rod, second by Cody. Any corrections or additions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Four point oh, public hearing is done. Five point oh, proclamation is done. Six point oh, old business. Six point one, second reading of ordinance rezoning property located at seven oh four East First Street, Anamosa, Iowa, from multifamily residential, three R two to arterial commercial C two.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Kay.
I moved away the third reading.
We'll just need to vote first.
We got.
Sorry. That's okay.
You're getting ahead of yourself.
I am.
But that's a roll vote.
Mockart?
Yes.
Rod Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Kay Smith?
Yes.
Possible waiver of third reading.
Summled.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich. And that too is a roll vote.
Crowe?
Yes.
Kay Smith?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yes.
Rod Smith?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Six point two, first reading of ordinance rezoning property located at one oh six Morris Scott's Street, Anamosa, Iowa, from multifamily residential, three R two to arterial commercial C two.
Isn't this the second reading?
Second, but it says first.
Yeah, move to approve for a second reading.
The second reading.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody, and that two is a roll vote.
Kay Smith?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yes.
Rod Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Possible waiver of third reading.
Summled.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich.
Are you, there's been no, nothing at all from the public, any things come up about these?
I have not received any comment on these.
Well, this one since the day was billed as been commercial, so.
Well, I know, but that's about the time you bring it to the public is when it all of a sudden becomes an issue. So.
And it's also a roll vote.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Rod Smith?
No.
Mockart?
Yes.
Kay Smith?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Seven point oh, new business.
This, I apologize, this, the agenda that was given to you tonight is not the one that was in the packet, it's, it for whatever reason reverted back to an older version, so we're at eight, eight point, or seven point one.
Seven point one.
Sure. If you want to read the language off of the packet. I'll pull it up.
This is what that should be. Seven point one, resolution setting the date for special election on proposal to enter into general obligation loan agreement and to issue bonds and in aggregated principal amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety thousand dollar.
Two million nine hundred thousand.
Two million nine, yeah, what's the best? Two million nine hundred thousand for police station. Okay.
And fire station.
And fire station addition, seven hundred thousand projects.
To clarify, this resolution, this resolution would set the, uh, special election on March third, uh, to borrow the funds for the police and fire station projects. The police station, again, a maximum amount of two, two point two million. The fire station maximum amount, seven hundred thousand. The joint borrowing would be two point nine million.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Kay, second by Betty.
What?
This is the petition, not run around, right? The people asked for an election, let's give it to them.
So no matter what the dollar amount, when it's petitioned, it has to go to an election? Is that a correct statement? Um. I think if you were going to radic-, you know, radically change your proposal for a lesser amount than the seven hundred thousand, you could cancel this project, bring your new project forward, and try the reverse referendum route again. That would still leave the public the option to petition it again. Um, but again, you're limited to that under seven hundred thousand. Um, but I mean, if you keep everything the same, um, as proposed, I think the petition really requires a special election. Okay, you allowed to say something?
So, um, it doesn't matter the dollar amount when it's petitioned?
Um.
I'm not sure.
I guess I'm.
The money was the issue to begin with.
So.
That, well, that, yes, um, I'm glad you said that, but that's what they'll be voting on. Correct, is the funding of it.
Correct.
Um. But, so, so we, we originally were asking for the seven hundred thousand under reverse referendum, which would, assuming there was no petition, we could borrow those funds without an election. Anything above that dollar amount, it doesn't matter, um, if there's a petition or not. If it's seven hundred and one thousand dollars, we have to take that to a special election anyway. But because we had a petition, um, we kind of reevaluated and, and hired the consultants, figured out the, you know, true, true cost, which I, I think was ultimately a good thing. And, um, now we kind of know our dollar amount, and it's, it's got to go to a special election because of the petition, but also because of the dollar amount, so. I think, again, the only way you could try to avoid the election would be to come up with a different proposal that is underneath seven hundred thousand.
Well, let me ask you this, um, because I'm going to assume that what they came up with was kind of the Taj Mahal final project. What would happen if we could figure out a way of scaling it back and maybe reducing the initial outlay cost? And then maybe five years down the road, do another portion of it and another portion? And instead of going to two point nine, we can, I don't know, bring it down to one point five or something like that?
Well, and a lot of it's like ninety five thousand dollars for furniture, things like that. I mean, that over time.
Well, and that's just that, there's got to be ways we can scale this thing.
Yeah.
To minimize some of the expenses.
You know, again, I, I think, I think it's our goal to do things as efficient as possible. Um, there, there may be things that we can scale back, um, but what I just, I want to be hesitant about is, is putting our department in another temporary situation that, you know, without giving them, I guess going the full mile this time versus last time is just kind of, well, this is temporary solution that lasted fifteen years, and so.
Well, I, I don't think, look at it as a temporary solution, but, you know, there's portions of that building that double probably their space without getting into some of the other space that they want to remodel that could be remodeled or taken care of, like I said, down the road. If we can get a majority of it done and completed, where they have sufficient work area, sufficient space to do whatever they need to do, maybe because they had that community room in the front, that could be partitioned off with cubicles, and that could be where they work until we get the back area finished, and then that could become the community room at a later date.
And I think originally that was the original plan, that if we could get them in there for four, five hundred thousand dollars, you, we could just do it, and then add this in a couple of years, and add this in a couple of years. But when the petition went about, I mean, let's be honest, we all know it's not really the money, because there are same people fighting, the police station going there are willing to spend four to five million on a brand new building. So it's not the money, it's other personal issues that are why we're where we are today. So I'm like a hundred and ten percent in agreement with Rich as far as the original plan is exactly what you described, am I correct?
You know, there's going to be, somebody's always going to have, it's the money, it's the location, it's whatever. But if we can kind of meet in a medium on at least the money portion of it, we might have a better chance of passing than.
It, it's still a lot of money, but it is the most economical way for us to get a quality building for our police department.
It truly is.
We're like tripling the space they're in now, just square footage alone.
And, and get them out of their temporary location that they're in now, that is going on here.
But get it out to the people too, that maybe work in stages, like Rich said, instead of spending all at once, it's feasible to do so much of the time and work through that way, so the people know it.
And the months and months and months, we sat here going through, what about this space? What about that space? What about this building? But, I mean, it's not like, I mean, I think the public feels this was a sudden decision that out of the blue, the council just tried to sneak on by them, but there were months leading up to this.
There were a lot of buildings looked at.
There was a lot of buildings looked at, and building sites too.
Well, I know the proposal from Shive had, we, reps two weeks ago, they had pretty much estimated the, the cost of this project to two point two million dollars. That was in a sense a anticipated turnkey done project. Uh, just bouncing some numbers here, you know, two hundred and forty thousand and some change for the, for the building, the site. Uh, approximately a hundred and twenty five thousand for, they estimate for the furniture and that, and also their, you know, the, the expense of hiring them. So y- y- you take that off of the two point two million, and you know, you're getting down to, you know, you're one point five, one point seven, uh, and if you want to cut that more, what are you going to pay on the back end, five years down the road for building costs? So it might, two point two million's a lot of money, I think everybody in this room would agree with that. But if you're going to spend it, now's the time to complete the project. And it's, you know, it's not our decision come March, it's a voter's decision.
That is true.
Kind of up us, I think, to educate them on, I mean, once it gets.
There's work to be done between now and March.
Yes, and sometimes, once it gets personal, then people don't want to see the past. There's not a lot you can do with that either.
Well, it's also our, our responsibility to make the best proposal and most economical proposal.
And I certainly believe this is, this is it, Rich, uh, you know, you talk, you want to talk new, four million dollars for someplace brand new? You know, I don't want to bankrupt this community or the residents within it.
Well, I don't think anybody does.
You, you now have tied your hands for any future project expansions, swimming pool, uh, and others. You've locked yourself down if you want to go the four to five million route.
Well, and we know building costs are going to increase.
That was pretty clear by the Shive team when they were here, that, you know, even delaying into next fall.
Yes.
As, you know, I wanted to pull their reins in and lower this down some, and after giving it other consideration, additional consideration and talking to others, my idea wasn't such a great idea. I believe now is the time to strike.
I wouldn't let the public speak.
All right, anybody that's got any words that they want to, until the podium.
My name's Alan Zumba, uh, sixteen hundred Breckridge Drive. I'm going to pass the sheets down to each of you. Uh, the figures I have in here are not nailed down, it doesn't really give us an exact price. But I did some research yesterday afternoon, called people I knew, uh, I've come up with a few things that, uh, I got a suggestion, and I'm not on the council, so it'd be a few votes to make a decision on that. Did you have anyone in there?
Yeah, I had.
I'm just going to read it for ban, because I don't want it to turn into a long night here, me jabbering. Um, the architect will get a percentage of the cost of the finished product, and all they will be doing is standing on the sideline directing traffic. Any good contractor worth a salt can do the work without that type of supervision. We have building codes that they are required to follow. This, the figures that I've got here are based on a four thousand eight hundred square foot house. That, keep in mind, this isn't a house, but size wise, that's probably about what we're going to be working with. I rounded it off to two million dollars and say they saved us a little bit of money, but the, the contract, the architect is going to end up getting, uh, anywhere from an eight to twelve percent percentage cut out of that final cost, which gives him two hundred and forty thousand dollars for standing on the sidelines, telling everybody what to do. We already have to pay them for the plans that they've made, I, I think that was probably a good investment. It's a guide to an end. Uh, I see there's, in my vision, I see there's, uh, parts of this project that, uh, would be considered major electrical upgrades, leveling the floor behind the, uh, what used to be the restaurant and cementing in the entrance area to the garage. The rest is remodeling inside. Wiring, uh, what I figured is going to, could run anywhere from twenty two to forty five thousand dollars. Um, the service panels that we need down there, there's, there's multiple panels. I think it should be upgraded to one panel, uh, it could be anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. Leveling the floor, I talked to, uh, uh, somebody I know real well, um, this would be the room behind the restaurant, the large one, um, it, uh, needs to be leveled. He said it would run anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand dollars to do that. He has a system that is, is used in garages, in all kinds of businesses. It's an epoxy coating that you put on, uh, it can be, there's many color choices. The finish is, is clear coated then, it's cuff resistant, um, easy to clean. He said it would run about, uh, five to six thousand dollars to do that. I'm basing this on a thirty by forty foot room, I think that's about the size that we're looking at there. Cementing in the back lot, uh, and putting a ramp, uh, there's a two drop, a two foot drop there, so it's be easy to do. I'm doing an expansion of my shop, a thirty two by forty two foot slab, uh, that's going to cost me about twenty two thousand dollars. That includes, uh, busting up the cement driveway and hauling that cement away. The back lot of that, and that ramp is a lot smaller in the project that I'm doing. Uh, they're not going to be putting any kind of foundations in, possibly some kind of a foundation right against the building so the slab, uh, can float rather than, uh, or stay in one position instead of float on the ground. It won't cost anymore, I don't think, than, than eight or ten thousand dollars. So if you take those calculations I've got right now, those are the major things that have to be done so we can have a building that we can start working on inside. Um, at the twelve percent figure that the contractor or the, the architect would get, subtract that figure of, uh, the high side seventy eight thousand would give us a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars left that we aren't giving the, the architect. On the low side of two hundred and forty, we would end up with a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars that we're not giving the, the architect. At the eight percent figure, it, it's a lot less, but it's still quite a bit of money, eighty two thousand and a hundred and twelve thousand five. What's left, uh, inside that building, once that stuff's done, is framing and possibly lowering the ceilings. I would suggest we do that, and the reason I'm saying that is that we would be able to run all the wiring above the ceilings. We don't have to worry about going through the cement walls, that would decrease a lot of the expense. We would also have a dead air spat- space between the lowered ceilings and the ceilings in the building, which would make the building much more, uh, easily to heat, a lot less cost there. Uh, possibly sheet rock work, uh, separating offices and rooms and, and cubicles in that larger room, uh, painting some of the walls, paneling some of the walls, possibly laminating the floors in the, the front area. We could also do the same thing with the, the epoxy. It's, it's very, uh, monetarily efficient. We also have light fixtures enlarging the garage door on the west side at a twelve by twelve or ten by ten. That section back there is built in, it is not part of the cement building, so it'd be easy to do. Um, also, we've got office furniture, we've already talked about that, and cable. Cameras around the building, I, it would, I think, would we, also, we'd be needing, my cost, in my building cost me, uh, a six hundred dollars for install. I had five cameras, three door alarms, four motion sensors, so none of you people can get into my building. Um, and, um, as, the cost of, uh, of that for me is eight hundred dollars a service fee at the beginning, beginning of the year, and then a hundred and four for a month. I chose this because, uh, uh, the bank that I do business with also uses A D T, which is a company that, uh, I'm using, I'm really happy with, with what they're doing. We'll also be swapping out some doors, possibly windows. I heard and I was told that there is a company that, uh, can put bulletproof laminate on the windows, might be something to look into, uh, rather than start jerking windows out. Uh, even if the cost of, uh, raises to two hundred and forty dollars to do the inside job, two hundred and forty thou- or two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the inside job.
Al?
Yes, sir.
You need to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm going there. Um, what I'm getting at is, this five hundred thousand dollars that I hear you talking, it makes a whole lot of sense. And it could probably cost less, I think we should, uh, talk to, uh, local contractors and ask for bids, we haven't done that. This con- this architect came in and I watched this, and he kind of guided us into what he's doing, and now he's heading that way towards the cliff, and nobody's given a parachute. And we're going to jump off of that for two point one million dollars.
We have to, uh.
I've talked to a lot of people here in town, not a lot, but quite a few.
We have to limit the time per person.
It'll get voted down, and that, we don't want that. It's just going to slow the process down, and our police department needs a, needs a building.
My, my, can I respond?
Yeah.
Sorry, I, so my first concern is this. We, we have to follow a bidding process that is outlined by Iowa code, so we can't just reach out to local contractors and, and have an informal bid on the project.
No, I understand.
We're required to have, um, engineered specifications, um, drawn up so that the contractors can review those when they submit a, a formal bid.
Do they now have the, the, does they have those drawn up now?
We don't have those.
Specifications?
We don't have those yet, no. So at, at minimum, that would have to be done, and, and really, that's the, the largest expense of the engineer. Sure, they do charge us money to oversee the construction phase of the project, a- and I would argue that's worthwhile. Um, but the most expense is in designing the, the structure and creating those bid specs and, that we legally have to do, so we can't really avoid that cost. And additionally, I just, I, I know, um, that it, it seems like we can just maybe get by with something that's a little bit done here and there, but I, I really think, um,
When I say.
I personally trust in the expertise of the engineers and what they're proposing is, there, there's a lot of requirements, uh, legal responsibilities, eighty eight requirements, for, for example, um, that we have to meet, and, uh, also looking long terms, term, uh, in terms of getting the, the building in a situation that, that will last for, for decades rather than a few years before we have to do this repair, that repair, or this remodel.
Well, we've got a building that I don't think is going to need that much repair, it's, it seems very dry and air, it's well built. What we've got, we've got the house, we do have the house. All we have to do is remodel it, and I think, and it, I think that if we put out, uh, a request for bids from contractors, I'm talking local, but I, I know we have to have other contractors come in, but once we have the, the, what you're talking about, drawn up so they know what they can and can't do, I, I think that they can come in there and do it for a lot less than what they're, 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 they're doing.
I certainly hope they can, and, and maybe we will get bids back that come in far less.
Go down that route and at least see if that's a possibility, because right now, we're, we're depending on our pipe piper to lead us the right direction.
Is it kind of, I, I get where you're coming from, but isn't that kind of what we're doing? We brought them in to give us what we need to get engineers to draw what we need to put out there so that we can get bids?
Correct.
So our hope is that, once we get to that point in the bid process, you're correct, that bids come in very competitive, and we can bring it in for a lot less.
What I was thinking is that what we need to get is what information we need from them. But from that point on, I can't see giving them, I don't know, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, eh, cut to stand on the sidelines and tell contractors that we may end up hiring if we do, uh, what to do, because they're smart enough to figure that out. That's why they're contractors, that's why they're doing that stuff. Uh, local or someone from Cedar Rapids or someone from Des Moines that comes in and bids, um, we haven't done that, and I, and it wouldn't take us long to do that. It'd give us, it'd give us another avenue there.
Well, the unfortunate part that we're facing right now is, we've got to have the wording done for the, the vote by what, January?
Um, it's, it's the first meeting in January, I think.
Like the fifteenth or something?
Yeah.
So we don't have a lot of time to come up with that wording and the exact amount. So if we had maybe a couple more months, we could do some more investigating, but we don't have that unfortunately.
And I get what you're saying, but just to kind of give you a history, I am glad that, because number one, it's taxpayer money we're dealing with, not our own personal money.
Correct.
Number two, having them rules and regulations kind of sets it out there that it is being done correctly because it is somebody else's money, and in the event, and I'm going to use this example of our water plant, look at the mess that was created and thank God for the people standing on the sidelines because they sure earn their money. So I get what you're saying, outside looking in, but there have been times when it has been, the cities come out ahead, having paid that, which is unfortunate, we have to, but it's good we do, and I know that sounds, it's hard to explain, but.
It doesn't, in, in, in the case of the water plant, it's more complicated than, than remodeling the inside of a building. It's not a question of structural integrity or anything, it's a question of remodeling the inside of the building. That's why I think we should probably pursue something like that, but, uh, that's just.
But I would like to see us, if we can figure out a way to lower what we're asking. But I would like to see us, if we can figure out a way to lower what we're asking for in the bond. And, you know, I really wouldn't even be opposed to, when it came to painting, having some of the city crew members maybe do some of the painting. Because we've got, we've got city crew that, if they don't have anything, you know, like moving snow or something else, I don't know what to back at. They could maybe take advantage of that and chip in, do some painting, or do some power washing, or do.
Without a heavy snow in the middle of winter, there's not too much else going on.
Or even summertime if they're not busy, but I think we need to look at, if we can take advantage of our city employees, utilize them.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Tim Shaver from the Fire Department. I just got one question. Is, is it possible to separate us from those figures? And the reason I'm asking that, and I'm all for police getting a new building. I've seen what they're in, and they obviously need something. But the cost, and from what I saw at the very first town hall meeting we had, it appeared as if everybody was, was, at that point, was for fire expansion. So I'm just, what I'm curious about is if, is if we go in with those figures, if we go in with those figures, is that gonna cause a problem and kick us out of the running of getting an addition, if we're joined together?
Is it more difficult to have, I mean, it seems to me it'd be more easy and cut and dry to do one bond for emergency, City of Anamosa Emergency Services, as opposed to two separate? I don't know. I.
To, to answer your question, it, it is possible. I mean, there, there could be two separate questions.
Just so if it does come up for vote, and it gets kicked out, that we're just not lost in space up there.
But let me ask you this. How was the petition written? Was it written to have them as one item?
The resolution as presented is written as one item.
The resolution, but the petition to hold that, that vote?
Was on the resolution, wasn't it?
The petition was against both. So I, I think, my understanding is, my understanding is they could be presented as separate questions. I think, I think it's best to present them together, but.
Well, and I think a lot of people signed the position, petition not knowing what they were signing. You know, I mean, that's part of.
Mike Greavy, Anamosa Fire. This project was started back in two thousand and fourteen. We're still waiting. So if there is any way to get Measure A for Jeremiah's new addition, Measure B for the fire station, so we can proceed, otherwise, here we go again. We talked with you the first of March about this addition. So it'll be another year before we get a definite answer.
I mean, it'll be, I mean, March will be the election, yeah.
Yes. So there we are, another year down the road. So then, I don't know when you can ask for another special election. So we're just, we need the room.
I understand that.
There's no question about it, all you guys.
I, I think both, I think both projects are highly viable.
But if you're gonna combine both. I believe it's gonna get shot down. Here we go.
I believe both projects are very important, and, I mean, to take your point, I mean, the police department has been in its need just as long, if not longer. And so I think.
I, I don't know the original position, petition.
Two thousand and four. The police department went into temporary housing in two thousand and four, temporary.
But the original position for this project, how it was written.
Sixteen years.
If it needed to be in one, or if you could go Measure A, police station, Measure B, fire station. Yes or no? That's my question.
And you're correct, Mike, they're equally important.
That would be ideal, if we could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the best would be to inform everybody that this is the best way to spend money, understanding that nobody at this table wants to spend any extra money. Just like everybody else in town. Nobody wants to spend any extra money. We don't need to.
And everybody needs to understand, equally important.
The, the other question is, if it doesn't pass in March, what's our plan be? Because the building that we're looking at, more than likely, will not be available by September. So then you're looking at possible new construction and doubling the cost at a minimum.
Won't that be sad?
And acquiring land.
Where?
Yeah.
Or tearing, or tearing something down.
Yeah.
Nancy Shaver, eight oh three North Division Court. I, I think there's, there's a need for both, but I think it's a health concern for the police department. I think it's a space concern for the fire department, and I think people need to realize that that health concern is a huge thing. So I, I, I don't wanna dismiss their need, but health, I, I think is important over space, so. The other thing, I'm glad you addressed the furniture thing, because how many people get a new house and get all new furniture? Usually don't get both. So, thank you very much.
Ninety-five thousand dollars, yeah. Not that we don't want it.
Angela Leinkoff, five oh one North Division Street. I would like to support Tim's request to separate them. There's just too much conflict surrounding the police department. We all agree that both departments deserve better, but at this point, unfortunately, there's just a lot of negativity, and the fire department shouldn't be held hostage because of that.
There shouldn't be negativity. That's the problem right there. It's sad that there's negativity towards the police department, when overall, it is to the best interest for the community as a whole. And I just, they're both equally important. You can't, you know, I appreciate Angela, what you're saying.
I do agree, and I'm not arguing that.
And this isn't a debate, so.
I'm not arguing that. I'm just expressing that there is.
That's fine. Oh, we know, we've all heard it. We've all heard it, and not one thing has been said to me, other than personal. Because I have to make a decision on fact, fiction, and opinion. I love that we all have an opinion, but opinion isn't what moves a community forward. It is fact and doing the best interest for the community as a whole. And I personally feel, and this is my last meeting, so what happens after tonight's out of my control. But it is the best interest of the community, keep emergency services together. The community should rally behind both. The community should be supportive of both, and the community should see that this is the best cost-effective way to get it done.
Then we need to get that out to the public.
Personal opinions. We do.
As opposed to this small little group right here.
Thank you, and that takes everybody in this room.
So the petition was the funding of all of it.
Correct.
The problem is, half the people who signed it didn't know.
I, I hope, I hope people read what they signed, and I hope people understand, and, and just public information, like, just inform yourselves on what, what the costs are and why we're, we're going this route.
Well, and that's where the public meetings better be good, better be factual, better be informative, and timely, because there's not a lot of time.
And it will be a sad day for Anamosa if this gets shot down for either one.
Well, and as part of that, those public meetings, we need to also have the fire department, their plan, their proposal, as a part of that, so that people are getting the full picture, not just, here's the police station. They need to have the fire department's side of it, too.
Agreed.
They need to have it all.
Yep.
Chris Nelson, Shaver. Just a couple of things, so you guys are just a better understand the proposal. And if we, I mean, when we do these public meetings, are all of our estimated costs for furniture and stuff, like we said last meeting, we were not aware of exactly how much you guys are looking at bringing over, so we're throwing in an estimated cost. I mean, when we can narrow that down, these costs will probably most likely go down, like Mike had explained. We were just trying to give you guys a safe number. So I, I totally understand where you're coming from, from the architectural standpoint. As far as that floor leveling goes, the six thousand dollars probably isn't gonna cover, I'm just guessing, not gonna cover a removal of all the brick in there.
Actually, he's not gonna remove it. He's going to grind and break, break down, level it with a expanded snip, and then move in and, and lay down the epoxy, and then flip over.
So why I brought that up is, our estimate for the floor leveling was, from a structural standpoint, you can't have a load bearing of that much more. I, I guess, I don't know what the epoxy's gonna weigh, but we were assuming removal of the brick and then pouring back in, just so that.
The way I understand it, the epoxy's about, I don't know, maybe a quarter of the stick.
And then, the only other thing I, and I might have missed it, did you have HVAC costs in your estimate at all for a building? Did you have HVAC costs in there at all? Because that was a large portion of ours, for heating and cooling.
Yeah. No, like I said, what, what I was putting in there was some of the major things that would be necessary to structurally get that building ready. And then, that's the remodeling expenses, but I don't see where it should cost.
This is a matter of the council. This, this discussion could occur out, outside of this council chamber.
So, so I, I just wanted to refer, I mean, a lot of this stuff that, like, like you guys were talking about, those listening here, the furniture wise, that cost could definitely come down, depending on what you guys carry over, and then along, when you start looking at a lot of the permitting, if somebody, if Jacob wants to take on the permitting and, and deal with the state building code, that's obviously a cost that Shaver would not have to incur. That would be on the city, or, you guys do not have a building inspector, as far as I know in town, is that correct? That is our cost that we have in here to do inspection on that, to make sure that this is being.
Which I think's an important cost.
Yeah, that this is being constructed properly.
It needs to be in there.
I'm, I'm just letting you know kind of what, because it was kind of gray last time, I'll admit, so just so you guys know where these costs are. This is definitely something, if we do these public meetings, like we discussed, we'll be welcome to share, but until we can really narrow down how much furniture you're bringing over, some of those things, there is contingency built in, which is a large chunk, just to give you guys a safe cost. One other thing from the last meeting, I don't remember exactly, it was somebody brought in about wanting to have access to the basement. So I did research. If you wanted to do that as a safe room, a community room, it's roughly two hundred K for an elevator to be put in on that building. We could probably use that existing shaft that's in there, but just something for you guys to think about, if you're looking at two point two, two point four, I mean, for this bond referendum. From the police standpoint, I don't want you to limit yourself if that's a big driving point for the public, so. If you have any questions on any of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris. We'll get to move, well.
Lucker?
Yes.
Rod Smith?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Kay Smith?
Yes.
Seven point two, review and approval of current bill.
Move to approve.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Rich. Any questions? If no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Eight point O, City Administrator Report.
I met with the city attorney today, and we did, got some, gained significant ground working on personnel policies, which I know has been an important thing for, for all of you. And I think we're getting closer. We're, we're not quite there, but, but we're making significant strides. Want to pass out. We are officially in budget season. The department heads have received our official spreadsheet, so they're working on their department budgets. And we will be reviewing them, and. But anyway, here's a tentative timeline for getting the budget approved. I wanted to go over it especially, just because there was a new law that passed that requires an additional public hearing, and so kind of had to move things around a little bit. But right now, there will be, I think we can do it with just two, two additional special meetings for budget-related items, and try to tack the rest of the departments at the end of other regular meetings. There is another, third special meeting on that list, and that's a, a elected official orientation, which I think we've discussed before. But the dates, again, are tentative, but that's kind of the date I'm looking at for those meetings, and, and the rough order that things need to go. If you guys do have conflicts with dates on those special meeting dates, please let me know, so we can plan accordingly. Any questions on that? Expanding a little bit on the orientation. I just, still working with the city attorney on developing that, but looking at roughly spending probably most of the morning. I'm looking at a whole day event on a Saturday, that's the twenty-fifth, and I'm spending most of the morning with the attorney, and maybe another, possibly another consultant with experience in city, local government, that can kind of go over the nuts and bolts of, of city government, and especially your responsibilities. This would, I think it would be good for both our new members and, and the current sitting council. And then the aft, afternoon, hopefully getting a tour of the different departments, getting to walk the facilities, hear from the department heads on, on their daily issues, and just so, so that we're all more on the same page and working in the same direction. So that's kind of the concept.
I would like to see the, the council touring these facilities more often. Especially before budget time, so everybody understands why you're asking for money and, and where you want it to go.
Sure.
And the necessity. So we, we understand the needs versus wants a little better.
Yeah, I think that's something I would like to do, at least ever, following every election, and maybe just every year, I don't know, but.
Ah, I really think it should be every year, probably starting in.
Every year, or maybe a couple of times a year, really, because it changes very quickly.
And it's something that could be like at five-thirty, meet. And for some of it, have the public that, you know, come see the millions of dollars you spent on a water plant, and, and how your water's treated before it gets to your house type of thing.
Sure.
And then there's places like for the parks, obviously, in the wintertime, it's no good to go look at the pool and talk about that, so. That needs to be done in a warmer time of year. That needs to be done in a warmer time of year.
Okay, the only other thing, uh, I probably, I had at one point thought about putting this on as a, an action item and just in case, but we'll probably discuss it again with, with, in the new year, but, um, I kinda just wanted to have a quick discussion on, on the tablets you guys have. And I'm aware, I think at least one is defective, so I didn't know how the rest of them are working, if, I wanna make sure everybody's got access to our stuff. Do we need to look at either just, just replacing one or maybe the, look at replacing the whole set?
How old are they?
Are they four years, three years?
Four, all three?
Yeah, three to four.
Now mine today at home wasn't picking up about the meeting and I called Rich and I come in here tonight and everything was on there. So I don't know why, why it wasn't doing it, but now it's fine, so.
My plug in.
That's cause I touched it.
Magic.
And, and maybe, I know other communities, uh, I know Center Point, each council person pays a fee towards the tablet and then after four years they just, to, they just take it with them to keep them new. You know, so maybe that's something that the, the council member pays for part of it and just to help keep upgrading it.
Cody and I can make the motion, give you guys pay raise while we're getting on this. Tablet, tablet expense.
Well, I'll, I'll make.
Will you email this?
Yes, I will email that out.
When do you, uh, expect to have a draft on the, um, personnel policy? And is that something that, uh, you'll let everybody review before? Um, and give some input on it, or do you have any thoughts on that?
Like everybody, all the employees, you mean?
Yes.
So I would hope to get, um, a very near final draft complete, have it re- reviewed by the department heads, um, get their input and make any final, um, adjustments before presenting it to the council and being that the length and, and detail that's gonna be put into it, I, I would hope to give them a, a good amount of time, hopefully a month to review it before it's actually discussed, um, because.
Well, the reason I ask is because almost every issue we have with personnel is not something one of us picks up because we don't have anything better to do than read it. Um, it's the people that live and breathe it, that work in it, uh, you know, they have to live by it and, and so.
Yep.
Having them look at it and understand it all and, and making it easy for everybody to understand is.
It's probably good that the attorney, the attorney knows what's happening in other cities and working for other cities is probably being helpful too.
Yep.
I do have a question since you brought up the city attorney.
Sure.
Um, at one time you were going to talk to him about what we can do to remedy the building on Main Street that encroached onto city's property.
Yes.
I would like to have that maybe on the agenda for the next meeting, so we can address it. And have him maybe present or.
We, we, so.
Something to, so.
Needs to be drafted.
So we don't let this thing just fall through the cracks.
He, he, uh, a letter has been provided to the property owner re- requiring that, that it be remedied. Uh, we haven't received any response back, I will follow up with the city attorney.
Was that in our memo?
When, yeah, when did this happen? I don't recall ever seeing that anything was going on.
Included in the memo, I apologize, but, but a, a letter has been provided, um. I will follow up with the city attorney and, and if necessary, we'll, we'll put it on future agendas so that, I, I definitely don't wanna let this just slide by.
Okay.
So that's everything for Jacob?
All I have.
Nine point O, Mayor and Council Reports on Boards of Commission.
The library met on Monday, we worked on preparing the budget for the incoming year and chose to spend over nine thousand dollars on some additional security measures for the library.
Like in the former cameras and.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't have anything except for I did wanna say that I have loved serving on the council for the last four years. I'm sad that I'm gonna miss my favorite thing, budget time. I like, that is like my top favorite thing, I can't believe. But anyway, um, encouragement to the new council members coming on, do take advantage of League of City Training. It is phenomenal what you learn as far as your roles and duties on serving on the council. It will probably be nothing like what you actually expected it to be, it's totally different. Um, so, yeah. And I wish everybody a lot of good luck, I might be back in a couple of years, we'll see how this new adventure I'm doing goes.
Will miss ya.
Oh, my sunshiny face every day.
Exactly.
I'd point out January ninth, uh, seven PM at the library is the joint city, uh, supervisors' public hearing on the, uh, intersection at Old Dubuque Road, one hundred and thirtieth Avenue and one fifty-one.
Third Street.
It's one hundred thirtieth Street. Uh, it, it's a public hearing as far as, uh, input from city and county. I don't know to the detail of the proposal of a full closure, but that has been kicked around. Uh, so it would be a meeting to hear what the city, or the the cities and counties residents options would be, uh, is, it would impact both of those. So I encourage those to be in attendance on the ninth of January, seven o'clock at the library.
That's all the board. Ten point O, public with business with the council on items not on the agenda. Okay, everybody's jumping up, so it's eleven point O.
Mike Richards, one south, wait, what was my address? One, s- one fourteen South Booth Street. So, I talked with Betty Wymer at the LCC about the police station and said, every project I've ever done has gone over budget. I have one of my employees here tonight who can attest to that. But none of my bu- budget have ever gone three point one four, three percent over budget. Cause I remember hearing, oh, seven hundred thousand is gonna be more than enough for the police station. So I'm okay with spending that kinda money, but not the scary big money. And maybe instead of buying new furniture, maybe we could buy some used from Welter's.
Bring some of our own over.
Bring some of our own over. Then my other concern is that we build this big fancy building, who's gonna maintain it so it doesn't become a problem like the current building? Is that in the budget, are we thinking about that? You know, who's gonna fix the leaky pipes, who's gonna replace the ceiling tiles, who's gonna keep the sidewalk good?
Well, to answer part of your question, uh, I was involved in the budget for the fire department and we, um, added some extra in there already for electrical and, uh, gas utilities i- in hopes that this year that the, uh, everything will go through and, and we still need a means to heat and, and keep the lights on, so. During budgeting, that'll have to be a concession that's made to add to those things to, to maintain them.
Because I mean, those are.
So, so as of right now, the, the fire department budget is done and, and those concessions are being made currently, uh, in planning that this will go forward. Right. At least for that, police at this point, that budget has not been made until after the first of the year, so. I imagine at that point they will, they will add to their budget, uh, just planning that this will move forward.
Okay.
And, um, in retrospect of our conversation at that meeting, um, exactly you hit it spot on, and if you remember, the whole police department thing, that was a problem long before anybody at this table was even here, before Jacob was here, before the police chief was here. This, I don't wanna say it's been dumped on our labs, because it's been dumped on our community's lab. Um, the years and years of whatever has happened before any of us were involved, I have no knowledge of it, I can't imagine Jacob or Jeremiah or anyone else has any knowledge of it. Um, it's the hope of, I'm sure everybody, that lesson learned, it never happens again. And I, you are gonna get no dispute from anyone at that table on that.
Right. So, I mean, like who maintains this building? Can they maintenance the police station now?
I mean, uh.
I mean, are those city workers?
General maintenance, I mean, you know, replacing, you know, light bulbs and things like that.
Fixing leaks.
Yeah, we, we generally rely on like our street department guys to come around and help with that, but anything larger, I mean, if we have to repair the roof or something, we normally are bringing in a, a contractor to do those types of projects and uh, I think that's something we definitely have to be proactive about, make sure we take care of our facilities, I think, uh, that is something uh, that, that is always a challenge, um, especially for our community, um. We have very nice facilities, um, that often, you know, I'm just gonna make an example of the, the library, which was largely fundraised, uh, but it's a massive facility, it takes a lot of money to maintenance and so we have the money to construct it, but, um, that's where balance, you know, the budgeting aspect is, is a big challenge because there wasn't money fundraised for the maintenance side and, and that's gotta be found and, and from the tax, tax funds, so. Um, but, but it obviously needs to be done, but.
Well, the other consideration is it does have a new roof on it, just in the last, what, six months? So theoretically, depending on what the life expectancy is of that roof, we've, should have a good chunk of, what, maybe twenty-five to forty years, give or take, before we have an issue with that roof. And I understand that, but I think a lot of the things that are currently going on in his building now are probably the same things that I was dealing with in my house. Leaks that were, oh, it's not that bad and now it's a conundrum. Right?
Such as I, right? I get it, we all get it, I mean, there's no surprise to anyone in this room.
So, I also believe that the two things need to be separate, only because I do employ two of the fire department people and I, they do leave on company time and go do whatever it is they do when they get called. And I hear about how they don't have stuff loaded up, it takes extra time. So, you know, I would like to see that separated so that it can pass. Cause I believe they, I mean, they're all volunteers, it's not like they're getting paid gobs of money to sit around and drink toddies. So.
Nor do our police department, I would hope, Mike, that I'm spot on with you and that they both pass. That is to the best interest of our community and that's what the community needs to hear.
Very pa- chance of passing if the dollar amount was scaled back. So, that's all I, thank you.
So, eleven point O, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, Carrie.
I don't know, they say it's Mercedes, I give a shot, that didn't do any good, they got creamed now, I don't know, really hurts.